But it's a council decision, up or down, so as we've explained that.
I don't even know what you're talking about.
You are correct. He's not waving at you, Chuck.
He was too.
No.
Yeah, it was.
I know.
Man been here for ages, so.
I know. I knew who you were waving at. I'm fresh as a daisy. Well, I am. Because you didn't have to stay up late.
Every second is sitting there. Were your boots on special?
No. I was a. Then I don't want to steal by the eight. I wore it yesterday.
The Chair will call the April fifth, twenty twenty-three meeting of the City Council, the City of Springfield, to order. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Clerk, if you please call the roll.
Will do. Alderman Redpath.
Here.
Alderman Gregory.
Here.
Alderman Williams.
Here.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Here.
Alderwoman Purchase.
Here.
Alderwoman De Senso.
Present.
Alderman McMiniman.
Here.
Alderwoman Conley.
Present.
Alderman Donlin.
Here.
Alderman Hanauer.
Here.
Mayor Langfelder.
Here.
Mr. Mayor, the quorum is present.
Mayor.
Thank you. Alderman Redpath.
Mayor, I'd like to ask for a moment of silence, please, for Mary Pat Madonia. She was married to Tom Madonia, obviously Alderman from Ward One, and she served as the Alderman after his passing. She passed away yesterday. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
And I pass along the condolences to Tom and Judge Mo Madonia this morning, and their family really appreciate their service, as well as Sam Madonia, that's her brother-in-law. And I remember when she was in that seat, she did a great job and an outstanding job of filling the term of her husband after he passed. So we really appreciate you bringing that forward. Alderman Redpath. Chair will entertain a motion dispensed with the reading of the minutes of the March twenty-first, twenty twenty-three City Council meeting and approve the minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
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 Vote, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council first reading of ordinances in the record of this City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say nay. Motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the consent agenda. The Chair will entertain a motion to incorporate the pre-council reading of the consent agenda in the record of this City Council meeting.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Mayor, real quick, do we, do we need to make a motion for, for John to be on?
Oh, yeah.
Make a motion, we allow.
Alderman Fulgenzie.
Yeah, all, John, to be able to get on.
Second. Moved in second to allow Alderman Fulgenzie to participate in the meeting remotely. And second, all, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place the consent agenda on final passage.
So moved.
Moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open. Alderman Fulgenzie. Thank you. And the consent agenda passes ten voting yes and none voting no. Agenda number twenty twenty-two dash three eighty-four, twenty twenty-two dash four six three, twenty twenty-three dash zero zero one, twenty twenty-three dash zero zero, zero five five, and twenty twenty-three dash zero eight six remain tabled during committee. Is there any motion on any of those?
Mr. Mayor.
Alderman McMiniman.
I believe Alderman Gregory and I had a ordinance that has been in committee. I'm looking for the ordinance number. Had to do with.
The water lanes?
Lanes of.
Zero five five, Alderman.
Which number, Mr. Clerk?
Zero five five.
Zero five five, so I'll make a motion for, for passage.
To bring out a committee.
Okay, a motion to bring out a committee.
There's a motion, is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion on the motion to bring zero, or two zero, two three dash zero five five out of committee? And second, any discussion? Alderman Gregory.
I'm, I'm only hesitant to bring this out at, at this time, you know, as, as I thought we had discussed, just, just to, you know, let this be and, and move on to the new mayor and the new council. You know, it's something I'm passionate about, and, and I don't want to make this a big deal right now, because it will be a big deal, and, and.
Okay, I, I thought you had the opposite opinion ten minutes ago, so I'll withdraw.
It wasn't ten minutes ago. You, you said something should go, go on to the next council or the next mayor.
I think that is a different.
This, this would be the, the same thing. It relates to it.
Okay, that's fine.
Thank you.
So I.
Figure you withdraw the motion.
Motion to discuss twenty twenty-three zero five five.
Second.
So the motion's to discuss? Is that correct?
Yeah, I withdraw that, Mr. Mayor.
Oh, to withdraw it. Okay. It's been withdrawn. Next item on the agenda is twenty twenty-three dash zero six nine, an ordinance authorizing the execution of an annexation agreement between the City of Springfield, Illinois, and Charles W. McLaughlin and Pamela S. McLaughlin for property located at thirty-seven twenty Bissell Road. Chair will entertain a motion to recess the regular meeting of the City Council meeting to hold a public hearing regarding this annexation agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say nay. Motion carries. Public hearing is now open. Does anybody wish to address the City Council regarding this annexation agreement? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular City Council meeting.
So moved.
Sorry.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say nay. Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number twenty twenty-three dash zero six nine on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Aye.
Thank you. And the annexation agreement passes eleven voting yes and none voting no. Next item on the agenda is twenty twenty-three dash zero seven zero, an ordinance authorizing execution of an annexation agreement between the City of Springfield, Illinois, and Everett and Anna Langley for property located at forty-one zero eight Chickapan, Chickapan Road. The Chair will entertain a motion to recess the regular City Council meeting to hold a public hearing regarding this annexation agreement.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion?
Aye.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Vote, say nay. Motion carries. Public hearing is now open. Does anybody wish to address the City Council regarding this annexation agreement? Chair will entertain a motion to adjourn the public hearing and reconvene the regular City Council meeting.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Vote, say nay.
Aye.
Motion carries. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number twenty twenty-three dash zero seven zero on final passage.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Yes.
Thank you. And the annexation agreement passes eleven voting yes, none voting no. Next item on the agenda is twenty twenty-three dash one zero nine, an ordinance approving the appointment of Rosario Wortman to the Commission of International Visitors. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number twenty twenty-three dash one zero nine on final passage.
So moved. Second.
Been moved in second, any discussion? It's an individual here, if you'd like to come forward and introduce yourself to the council, we'd appreciate it.
Hello, everybody. Thank you very much for the opportunity given to me this evening. My name is Rosario Wortman. I've been part of the Springfield community since, I believe, twenty-ten, and I've been part of the commission informally, because I always host everybody, the commission that comes in. I work for the state, my family's here, we are part of Blessed Sacrament Church. I know many of you. I have seen you guys on TV too also. And I work for the Department of Human Services and originally from the Dominican Republic, and is an honor for me to get the appointment to be part of the commission. Thank you. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Any questions? Well, thank you for being here, we appreciate it. Appreciate your service.
Thank you for the opportunity.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Yes.
Thank you. And the ordinance passes ten voting yes and none voting no. Next item on the agenda is twenty twenty-three dash one twenty-one, an ordinance approving the tax increment redevelopment plan and project for the Andorondak Tiff Redevelopment Project area. Chair will entertain a motion to place agenda number twenty twenty-three dash one two one on final passage.
So moved.
There a second?
Second, the motion.
Been moved in second, any discussion? Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. I, I thought this particular ordinance was amending the existing downtown Tiff and taking the property out. I think when you read it, it sounded like we were adopting the plan.
Yeah, corporates, council, if you'd like to.
You'll have to read the title off of the, the agenda. Yes, the first one would be an amendment. It's an amendment to the downtown plan, which just simply takes out that parcel. Takes out the parcel. And that should be number one twenty-one.
Just making sure, that's all.
Yep. Twenty twenty-three, one twenty-one should be the first, first item.
Yep.
And what, what this does, you may recall that this is currently in the downtown Tiff district. This is actually taking just that limited parcel out.
Right.
And then creating the new one that's just for that small area and dedicated to, to the Andorondak project only.
Right, but.
And that's the next three items.
Yeah, this one takes it out.
We're on the same page, but that's not how.
Right.
I just, just making sure, because I know how important it is with the Tiff. You have to adopt the ordinances in the exact order, or you've got a problem, so.
According to state statute.
Yes.
Right, corporates, council?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
So this first, first one does take it out of the district. Next one that we'll read in is with regards to the plan, project, and then the next one is regarding the area. So this one is to take it out of the area, or the district, rather, downtown district.
I'll make the motion to pass, Mayor.
Second.
Been moved in second, and then discussion? All in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Yes.
Thank you. And the ordinance passes nine voting yes, one voting no. Next item on the agenda is twenty twenty-three dash one two two, an ordinance approving the tax increment redevelopment plan and project area, project for the Andorondak Tiff Redevelopment Project area. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second, the motion.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Yes.
Thank you. Alderman McMiniman? Are you yes on that? Sorry.
Sorry about that.
And the ordinance passes nine voting yes, one voting no. Next item on the agenda is twenty twenty-three dash one twenty-three, an ordinance designating the Andorondak Redevelopment Project area. Is there a motion?
Motion.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved in second?
Sorry.
Any discussion?
Yeah, Mayor.
Yes. Alderman Hanauer?
I just, I got a question. So if we have, so, so we're taking these out and we're putting it in their own Tiff area, is there a limit of how many of these kinds of projects we can have in a Tiff area? Is it, it's unlimited, right? So in a way, are we, are we hurting, we're hurting that Tiff, right? Are we hurt? My point is, is the idea of the Tiff was to get other people to, to take part in that Tiff, and as we start pulling things out, there could be a potential, you know, I think there needs to be, we need to look at setting some rules of how many we're going to allow, because we don't want the downtown Tiff all of a su- you know, we've already got obligations on that, and I'm sorry I didn't talk about it before, but I, it just kind of hit me. We got obligations on that Tiff, and we start taking pieces out that potentially could have built that Tiff up, we could find ourselves in some financial trouble. Am I wrong? I, I, is that the way I'm?
Yeah, it's area by area, of course. This one's a vacated block, so.
Right.
Alderman McMiniman?
That's just the point I was going to make. This is a, an area that's been vacant, unimproved, a flat parking lot at best for, I think it's twenty years. So actually, we're creating something for the long distance, long future, that will create value for the long-term life of the new structure. But then, in addition to that, what you're trying to do is create increment surrounding that development, so that the surrounding properties gain market value and you attract residents, you attract shoppers, you attract restaurants, et cetera. So it's, it's a long-term approach.
Alderman Donlin.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Alderman Hanauer, to address your question as well, just to add a little bit to it. You know, the first thing that, there's another ordinance that deals with a different project. And the first thing I looked at with that particular one, because it is in an existing Tiff district downtown, is whether or not increment was being generated on that piece of property. Because you're right, if we've committed dollars for, for other projects from that particular project, we would have an issue. So we always have to ask those questions. I think it's a great question to ask. But if the property, which I, and I don't remember if this specific parking lot, Alderman McMiniman, they commented on, if this particular project is indeed generating increment, but I would be surprised because of the reasons stated. So, you know, obviously, the investment, the good thing is that the risk is on the developer.
Right.
And, and if the project's not successful, guess what? Developer doesn't get any rebate or reimbursement. So there's, it's, it's, I think the positives here are good. And the project, from what I understand, would not be possible without Tiff and the new twenty-three-year life.
Yeah, I, and, and the only reason why I, I'm just looking, is there, do we need to look at something down the road to, to kind of put a cap on things like this, so that it doesn't hurt the Tiff? I, I like the idea of, of, of doing things like this, to where it puts an onus on the, on whatever they're building to.
Yeah.
To succeed. But in the end, what, what I could see is, as we get fifteen years down the, the road, our Tiff could, we could be struggling for money if we, if we do this too much.
You know, if I can.
So I, I, and that's, that's just, that's, that was just my thought process.
I would.
And something else that, Mayor, if I can.
Yep.
Still technically on the board here. It's, it's something else I'd like the city to consider, is when a Tiff is put in place for a specific project like this, a targeted Tiff, I guess is the new terminology, that the cost of the establishment of the Tiff be passed on to the developer as well. In other words, why should the taxpayers pay for the cost to set up the Tiff district? Which I don't remember, back in the day, it was thirty thousand, it's probably fifty to sixty thousand now, maybe even more, who knows? But why shouldn't, why shouldn't that be, that cost be borne on the developer? Of course, that's an eligible cost to be reimbursed for based at the, at the project's successful. But it's, again, puts more of the risk, more of the burden on the, on the developer rather than taxpayers. So something we should probably talk about in the future.
Alderman Purchase.
Thank you. I'm glad that Alderman Hanauer brought it up, because being in Ward Five, we have another project right across from the, well, it's outside of the Tiff. It's like on that corner going down Adams. It's like a little triangle, and that's not even included in a Tiff that I had brought to the mayor's attention. Someone asked for that to be a target Tiff. Vinegar Hill is asking for help, and they're outside of the downtown area too, asking for a targeted Tiff. So I think looking at that, seeing how many do we give out? Is there something to a specific ward with having the downtown included in that? So I, I would like to take a look, because those are outside of the actual Tiff district, but it's right across the street.
Outside the Tiff district, I, I'm, I'm just looking at it from the standpoint of taking away from the actual Tiff that we have. You know, we got so much, I don't know what, what are, what, what we've already.
Accumulated.
Yeah, accumulated in the, in the fund, and how much we've, we've outlayed, we're, we're scheduled for. But I just, I could see an issue down the road, and I think that, you know, we need to, we need to kind of be cautious with it, and probably, probably ought to set some, some boundaries or some type of a, a rule in order to, to not put ourselves in any trouble.
It would.
And I'm, I'm more concerned about the downtown Tiff than, than any of the other, because obviously, this is the area where it seems like we're seeing more of it.
Developed.
So that, that, I just wanted to bring that up. I, I, it, it caught me on this particular.
We have another project on the corner of Corf and Adams. They're asking for a targeted Tiff, the old bank. And it's not enough funds within our Tiff already that we have to even support the project. But when we keep having these projects come forward with targeted Tiff, people are saying, well, what makes their project more presidential than mine? So finding a way to have those boundaries and doing transparency, I do think will be helpful coming forward.
Any other, Alderwoman De Senso?
I would just urge everyone to do their own research. California has outlawed Tiffs for a reason. Targeted Tiffs. I mean, we're, we're, how many Tiffs have we approved in the past six years since I've been sitting here? Yeah. Quite a few. That's why I'm voting no on any future Tiffs, and I stopped voting for, for Tiffs a few years ago. So please do your own research, don't listen to me. See, see what's going on and what other states are doing and why they're not doing Tiffs anymore. That's all I have to say.
Any other discussion? All those in favor of the motion, vote yes. Those opposed, vote no. The voting is now open.
Yes.
Thank you. And the ordinance passes seven voting yep, or eight voting yes, one voting no, and one voting present. Next item on the agenda is twenty twenty-three dash one twenty-four, an ordinance adopting tax increment finance in respect to the tax increment redevelopment plan and project for the Andorondak Tiff Redevelopment Project area. Chair will entertain a motion.
So moved.
Second, the motion.
Been moved in second, for approval? Any discussion? Alderwoman Conley.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Is the developer in the, here?
Um, no, he's in, he wasn't able to make it today.
Okay, um, so my understanding is that the original ordinance for this, when we originally went through this proposal, there should, there was to be a PLA in place for this project. I haven't heard that that's in place. I don't know, Alderman Purchase, if you've heard anything?
No.
Oh, the PLA?
Yeah.
Corporates, council, is that in the redevelopment agreement?
Yes.
So I would, I would, this is, just so I'm clear, this is the final ordinance to pass for this project to go forward. I would be disinclined to pass this one right now. I, I think that we need to, we've asked that something happen in, in this, in this development project. The developer, from what I understand, is not being forthcoming or easy to contact for the unions, and we've imposed a requirement, I, again, and it's the same situation we've had with other, other projects. This is, once we pass this, I'm not sure what sticks we have left in, in our, to ensure that that, that provision is. I mean, obviously, there's the reimbursement, but I, I think it needs to be highlighted that this was something that we passed for a reason. We included in the, in the redevelopment agreement for a reason, and the developer probably needs to have a little more incentive to sit down and get that PLA addressed, so.
Well, that's a stipulation we can make in the redevelopment agreement, but I think it's there. But corporates, council, would you like to elaborate?
Yeah, the, you may recall that the redevelopment agreement was addressed, I think, at some length. I think the gentleman was here. This is more the logistical part of establishing the Tiff district itself. The requirements under the redevelopment agreement still exist. In other words, they cannot receive funds if they don't comply with that.
And I, I understand that. I'm just, I'm concerned, because what I'm hearing is the developer is.
Yes, I believe he indicated that when he was at the meeting.
Right.
Yeah, I'm just concerned, because the, from what I'm hearing, the developer has not been engaged in that process yet, so.
Can I ask, what is the role of them? Because we had this issue with Poplar Place too. So is it they sign it before it comes before us to pass, or do they sign it after?
It's usually a stipulation of the agreement, so it wouldn't go forward unless the PLA is executed. But corporates, council, would you?
No, I, I think it has depended, the, this individual is not involved with the Poplar Place. This is a separate developer.
I understand, but we had an issue before, so I'm saying it's ongoing.
Some similar kind of concept, thank you. Yeah.
Well, the, the one on Poplar Place was signed before the development agreement was voted on by the council?
Because we'd asked for that. And in this case, we don't have that.
What if we hold it?
Yeah, just hold this, this one ordinance for two weeks.
Well, we'll have to check and make sure. We may have to just republish, because we're within a certain, remember, there's a public hearing to create the Tiff. And so we're within that zone, but we'll have to check. If it has to be republished, that's possible to do.
I'm okay with that. Also, I thought it was a little concerning, but I did want to have Grace, his sister, passed away in a bad car accident, so I wasn't able to talk to him for a while. But I know that we, Alderman Williams has constantly been asking, what is the minority participation goal? So I was waiting to have that conversation too. But maybe this is a time to just put it on pause and bring it back forward once we talk to him.
If you're, I mean, if you're okay with that, I think it's not, I didn't realize, I mean, obviously, people have lives with extenuating circumstances, and that's a big one.
The issue with this is a time-sensitive one. And again, what Alderman McMiniman had stated, this is a vacated property for decades, and it's, all you have to do is, it's in the developer's agreement, the project cannot proceed without the PLA. So it could be a, I'm not sure of his timeline. I know his financing is dependent on this, moving forward. So with developers, this has come up, timing's essential, time value of money. And so that's what we're talking about here, is time value of money. PLA's in the developer's agreement. So the vacated property's been there for twenty years, and this is a hundred and thirty market rate-driven apartment complex with a commercial space on the first floor that would serve the medical district. And Ryan McCready's in the audience, so he could speak to the importance of that, which has their backing as well. So, you know, I'd encourage a vote, you know, because it does have the parameters in the developer's agreement with regards to the project labor agreement.
Well, Mayor, I am in full support. When is the last time you spoke to him? Or Ryan, have you spoke to him? Mayor, have you spoke to him recently?
Not since his, like you said, the family situation. I've not spoken to him. I mean, it's not a project the Grift Alliance is leading. This is a Tiff issue the city's leading. But I've not spoken to him for some time, so I don't have any, unfortunately, I don't have any information for you.
Okay, thank you. Well, there's a few other people to speak to. Alderman McMiniman.
Alderman Conley. Alderwoman Conley, do you have anything else?
No, I didn't realize there were extenuating circumstances.
Alderman McMiniman?
I think we're okay here. We just have an agreement. We have an agreement with the developer where we agreed to establish the Tiff, targeted Tiff, and the developers agreed to have the PLA. And, you know, there's time to do the PLA, but the developer, we got the hatchet over the developer. Why? Because they won't get the, the Tiff money unless they have the PLA. So it's, it's just a matter of timing. I, I don't, we're just meeting our obligation here, our agreement to establish the Tiff, and they won't get any subsidy from the Tiff unless they establish and organize the project labor agreement. I don't know if they've had contracts yet with the construction trades, or, you know, how far along they are towards the breaking ground, but I, I think we're okay passing this.
Alderman Hanauer?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. Yeah, thank you, Mayor. What if we, uh, what if we add an amendment to this to, that says, uh, goes into effect when the, when the, uh, PLA is signed?
That'd be fun.
We can pass it and that kind of gets them on, uh, that, you know, I, I realize there must have been, there was a family issue, but at least they know that. So I'll ma- I'll make a motion, we amend this to say that, uh, that it goes into effect once PLA is signed.
So moved.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Oppose say nay. Motion carries. Is there any, uh, discussion on the ordinance as amended?
I think Alderman Gregory was trying to speak.
Never mind. Go ahead. Do your thing.
What's that?
Alder, he was raising his hand.
Sorry.
Oh. I was looking at the screen, see if anybody wanted else to make comment. So on the ordinance as amended, any discussion?
Motion to accept the ordinance as amended.
So moved.
Been moved in second. Any discussion? All in favor, say, or vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open.
Yes.
Thank you. And the.
Pushed it three times. There we go.
Okay. The ordinance passes as amended, six voting yes, one voting no, and two voting present. Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is twenty twenty-three dash one twenty-seven, ordinance amending chapter ten of the nineteen eighty-eight City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended by adding section ten point two five relating to posting of parking violations, grass, weed, and garbage statements. Chair Lentain a motion, place agenda number twenty twenty-three dash one twenty-seven on final passage.
So moved. Second.
Moved in second, any discussion? All those in favor of the motion vote yes. Those opposed vote no. The voting is now open.
Um, Mayor, I make, I make a motion, we table this.
Voting's already started.
It's already started. Come on.
And Alderman Fulgenzi was a.
He was a yes.
Yes. So the, uh, ordinance passes, six voting yes, four voting no. Next item on the agenda is twenty twenty-three dash one twenty-eight, an ordinance amending chapter thirty by adding section thirty point one one of the nineteen eighty-eight City of Springfield Code of Ordinances as amended relating to disclosures required of all city officials and those candidates for elected office. Chair Lentain a motion, place agenda number twenty twenty-three dash one twenty-eight on final passage.
Motion to table.
Second.
Been moved in second to tables or discussion?
Yes.
Alderman.
No discussion. No discussion on table.
No discussion on table.
Yep, um, a motion for to place on the table is not debatable, so the, uh, rules require you proceed directly to a vote.
Okay, to table or just to?
To table.
Okay.
Yep.
Roll call vote, please.
Will we just call off the machine?
Alderman Red Pat?
Aye.
Alderman Gregory?
Nay.
Alderman Williams?
No.
Alderman Fulgenzi? That's to, uh, present? That's to table, Alderman.
To table?
Yes.
Okay, yes.
Alderman Purchase?
Yes.
Alderman DeSanto?
Yes.
Alderman McMiniman?
No to the motion to table.
Alderman Conley?
Yes to the motion.
Alderman Donlin?
Aye.
Alderman Hanauer?
Aye.
Eight yeses and two nos, Mayor. Three nos, I'm sorry, seven and two, three, seven and three. Chair Lentain a motion to spend with the rules in place on first reading, agenda number twenty twenty-three dash one five five, ordinance accepting an amended development agreement between the City of Springfield Little Moi and Legacy Sports, Hart Sports LLC for the Office of Planning and Economic Development.
So moved.
Second, I can.
Been moved in second, any discussion? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Oppose say nay?
Nay.
Motion carries. Is there any unfinished business come before the city council? Is there any new business come before the city council? We are, uh, closed this Friday for Good Friday and, uh, I just want to make that announcement. Is there individuals? Oh, sorry, Alderman DeSanto.
Yes, uh, tonight is the first night of Passover, so, uh, we should, it's the first time in, I don't know, decades that, three holy holidays fall within the same week, so I think we should acknowledge that.
Thank you very much. Is there any other new business come before the council? Individuals that address to, uh, re, uh, address the council, first one's David Ray Gatos. David here? And then, um, Al Rajabi, did you want to speak? Is there anybody else that was signed up?
Yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate you having me out here. So today I missed my son's, um, T-ball game because I got a call yesterday that, um, said to me that I need to be here today. Otherwise you're gonna vote on the partnership agreement that we're looking to put together. So as I landed in Dallas, uh, I got a call that tells me that, hey, look, no, we changed our mind. They want to wait till the new mayor takes over. I wanna, you know, I want to remind you guys that when I bought the hotel back in twenty nineteen, I bought it because I'm a hotel guy. I'm a developer. I'm, and I'm good at what I do. I got awards from Marriott and Hilton and I S G. And I was wanting to be part of this town, but obviously COVID changed everything, right? And even during COVID, we kept the hotel open so we could be part of the city. And even during COVID, we decided to spark downtown and open up the brand-new Starbucks. And I decided to go ahead and sell the hotel. And I was on the contract with, um, Mr. Mitchell and his group. And unfortunately, I wasn't able to make too many comments or any type of, uh, discussion, just because when you're on the contract, you're, you're, you're stuck. Long story short, I'm no longer on the contract and I listened very carefully to Scott Doll and the team and, and the city council. You guys wanted to have two hundred and fifty hotel rooms. I heard you very loud and clear and and I said, you know what? I cannot get financing for Big Box Hotel. It's just not possible. Bank, as you all know, banks are failing left and right. They're in trouble. So in order for us to move this project forward, we have to partner with cities. It happens all the time throughout different cities. This is not something that y'all creating new. This happens all the time. And we work really closely. I know Ryan McCready and, and Ed and his team, they worked really hard to put this together. And I flew out here tonight so we could present in front of you. I didn't even have a speech. I was just gonna answer some of your questions. But I'm very disappointed. What I'm disappointed at is that this town is still such a lovely town. It has a lot of potential, but you guys are losing population, that your youth is moving out of town. You don't have developers lined up to come and develop in this town. And a fifty-eight million dollar development is not something that's small. It's huge. It will create amazing density downtown. And during this whole election thing, my name, my company's name, my employees were all like a, uh, like a boxing ring, like you guys are just, it, it just wasn't nice. This isn't right. And for the record, please write this down, the reporters, for the record, Tower Capital Group and Wyndham Hotel owes the city zero dollars. I paid the city one point five million dollars to make hole and I got the release of lien. So for anyone out there, keep making announcement that I owe the city two hundred and whatever thousand dollars. I don't. We had an agreement and I paid exactly the amount I was, that was agreed upon. So I would appreciate you guys stop doing that. I'm not sure. I see you smiling.
Cause this is insulting.
It's not insulting.
It is.
If you, let's, uh, have order, please.
It, it's not insulting. I'm expressing to you, it's, it's citizens, right? I, I've been, my team, my staff decided to come with me today, right? You guys represent Springfield. I think Springfield deserves, when you see, when you see, when you have developers coming in here to do projects, when you say no to this project, you're saying no, not just to my team, you're saying no to, obviously me, but you're saying also no to all the construction guys. I spoke to Aaron, uh, this morning and I have no problem signing a PLA. We did the Starbucks with PLA. You guys would not have a Starbucks if it wasn't for me. And if you want to take it personal, I'm sorry, but we gotta rise above that. We gotta get the politics out of this. Th- this is just, this is to stop. And I'm not gonna be bringing this back from you guys, but I advise you guys, for the next developer that comes to your town, let's not do this again, because otherwise your town will continue to lose population. And I was reminded today on a phone call that not many years ago, Indianapolis, Indiana, which I actually started, that was where I started my hotel business. Uh, that was my first hotel there, was the same size as Springfield. And Indianapolis is unbelievably grown. I don't know if that's, if that's what you guys want, but at the same time, you don't want a ghost town. And I, I, I know some of you probably just don't want to hear me, but that's on a street.
Alderman McMiniman?
Mr. Rajabi, uh, I really appreciate the, the random, uh, spontaneous conversation we had when you were in town a month ago on the sidewalk. And then you were in one of our downtown restaurants and, uh, I, uh, I caught up with you. I forget what I handed you, but it was something that you were interested in and I really respect, uh, your willingness to come back again and again and again. You, uh, you know, you really saw the promise of Springfield. You invested in Springfield. I think you've got a very, I walked from bottom to top of, uh, the Wyndham Hotel on St. Patrick's Day. I decided to just walk it and, uh, first floor, second floor. I went all the way to the top. They didn't know I was up there maybe, but I got up there and I looked down at the St. Pat's Day Parade and, uh, it was very well cleaned and impeccable and that impressed me. I, I really.
Thank you very much.
And I got into the restrooms, et cetera.
My staff should be taking the pride. They're the ones that do it.
And, uh, I, I understand what you, you, what you said about Starbucks. That was a, a further investment and, and, uh, I think a lot of folks in Springfield downtown respect that. Uh, and, uh, and, uh, then you initiated a phone call this, uh, not a phone call, but a text message this morning. And, uh, I tried to explain what had happened here, that it's not so much, uh, in my opinion, it's not the city council at this point, but the voters weighed in yesterday. And, and the voters voted in by a tight margin, a new mayor. And when a new mayor comes in, he brings a new city attorney, he brings a new economic development director, new top advisors, uh, new deputy mayor. And, uh, so that team is gonna weigh in on what, what, uh, this proposal, uh, is all about. And so, uh, you're being, uh, forced again to kind of wait and you're, you're losing patience. And, um, I'm sorry this is happening, um, because Springfield wants to have a good reputation and, and welcome developers. And, uh, this would be basically your fourth rejection. Uh, I think this last rejection is more from just circumstances beyond our control at this point because we, we've got a new mayor coming in. I think Mayor Langfelder has tried, tried, tried again. And I don't think this is any fault of Mayor Langfelder. And so I just want to apologize on behalf of Springfield. I wasn't born or raised here. I respect those that come in from out of town and get treated well here. And, um, I, I'm sorry that you're in between a rock and a hard place at this point in time. And, uh, I, I hope that, uh, the next mayor and her team, now, now Wyndham is on their plate. Now Wyndham is on their watch. Now Wyndham is their responsibility. And let's see how they handle it. Um, but if, if you're, um, a unfortunate victim so far, I hope it doesn't say that way. That's my opinion. We either fire buyer or we've set the conditions where you can do further investment in the Wyndham. So, um, thank you very much, uh, Mr. Rajabi, for traveling from Texas to get here.
I appreciate your kind words. Uh, I did want to get one thing clear. If I'm not mistaken, eight, eight of the city council members coming back, right?
Correct.
So we only need six. So there's only two votes, right? Uh, I mean, again, the decision's made, we're moving forward, no problem. I just wanted you guys to hear my side.
Alderman Purchase.
And nothing personal, but just want the city to understand that I didn't come here to start a fight. I came here to, to be part of your team, part of your town because your master plan did say that you want a density downtown. And I heard Scott Doll very loud and clear, he didn't want to lose his convention, but by Wyndham going away, he will lose his convention. Am I wrong? No, it would, they would lose all the convention space. Not the space, but the groups, because then there won't be enough rooms. I've tried, I've tried. This is, me, my control right now and I've tried to come out here. But, and it's not a threat in any way, but I wanted you guys to hear from the developer's side. It costs a lot of money to operate that hotel. And at the same time, forget about all the money, the staff, they're on a roller coaster, because they don't know what's gonna happen one day or the other. We've been in front of you guys so many times. So let's just make a decision and move forward. So that's what we could, we could move forward and either develop the hotel, create jobs, or do something that, you know, do, move on with our own plans. That's, that's all I want to tell you guys.
Alderman Purchase?
Thank you, Mayor. While I appreciate that you came here today, what I don't appreciate is you initiating a text message that Alderman McMiniman just said. But when I requested to speak to you as the home alderwoman, you said you did not want to speak to me. So you want to come here and sit and talk in front of everyone on TV, but you don't want to acknowledge that you refused to do a call with me. And I'm the home, uh, this is not for a response. I just want to do a rebuttal to what you said to make sure since we doing transparency that it's been, being put out here. I work hard to make sure that I'm representing downtown and I make sure that I talk to you all. But that was just an insult that you want to initiate a text message with Alderman McMiniman this morning. No, I'm not done.
Hold on, she has a floor.
Yeah.
Initiate a text message with him, but refuse to take a call from me so that I could talk to you and I could ask you some stuff. This is not the place for me to sit here and go back and forth and ask you questions right now in front of everybody. But if you would have took my call earlier, maybe I would have been able to talk to the rest of my colleagues.
Did you actually call me? Because I didn't get a call from you.
I asked for a call to be set up. A call was made to you for us three to be on the phone and you refused to speak to me.
No, um, Ryan is here. You asked for one thirty. My, I was on a flight at one thirty. My plane landed here at three thirty. And I got to the hotel at three forty-five. I'm sorry?
Whenever you got here, a call was what I was asking for.
What? You could have called me. You had my number.
No, I asked Ryan to set the call up since you want to name him. I asked Ryan to set the call up since we were all talking about it and a part of his board was involved in it.
It wasn't gonna change your mind.
I'm not, I'm, you don't tell me what's gonna change my mind, so that's what we're not gonna do. But I'm done. I just wanted to make sure I said that.
That's fine. That's fine.
And you coming and talking like that, you really think something is gonna happen?
No.
We gotta have respect up here in the quorum. And this is your third time, this is your third time coming here.
I'm not here for confrontation. I'm not here for confrontation. I just wanted to come here and tell you guys what I think. And, um, if you want to take it personal, you know.
So, uh, Mr. Rajabi?
Yes, sir.
Uh, if the, uh, ordinance comes back, um, I guess it sounds like the will of the council is to wait till the new city council takes effect. Are you open to that? I mean, that'd be probably the, uh,
It doesn't sound like, it doesn't sound like the city wants me here, Mayor.
What's that?
It doesn't sound like the city wants me here. It doesn't sound like the city wants the development to happen, because we've been here many times.
No, we want you here. We want the, uh, we. I can safely say, I can safely say, uh, we want you here. We want the Wyndham here, we, or the Marriott. I mean, that's what you had planned.
Oh, that reminds me.
Two hundred and fifty, uh, rooms, uh, with the, uh, up to two hundred market rate apartments.
That reminds me, um, I guess there was some question about me not having an actual Marriott franchise agreement. Just want to prove again, I don't just go buy a hotel, uh, and just hope that Marriott will give me, I have a great relationship with Marriott. Here is, you can see, I don't know if you all can see Marriott. Marriott, okay. And then let me go back here.
Mayor, I think that you are.
Alderman Conley? Or, or you, go ahead.
And here's a signature page by Kip Verland, who's a.
Well, the question is, would you, uh, is, uh, the, I don't think the council's ready to vote on it tonight.
That's what I was getting ready to say, is that we are in support of this project and as Alderman McMiniman said, you're just in an awkward position right now with a new transition coming in. So if you could not wait for that, and I know that the mayor did a good job with bringing us all together and bringing the board in and you was upset because we couldn't move it as fast. And the mayor recommended we needed to take time to vet it. Ryan said he needed to do some more research for all of us and get questions and answers done. And that's kind of what has happened, but now you're just in a, a, a different situation.
Look, can I explain real quick? See, the thing is that banking, some of you guys have experience in banking, right? It's, there, especially with what's happening with banks right now, it's very hard to get even a term sheet, let alone a commitment letter. And I worked really hard to get that, to, to put that together. And I worked really hard to get that, to, to put that together. And I know Ryan and his team worked really hard. And I was told that we were going to come in front of you before election. Then they said, you know what? We'll promise you, right after election, come on over. And, and that's the frustration that I have.
I understand.
I'm sorry that if I'm coming across as, I'm not, honestly, I'm not here to attack anyone whatsoever. I'm just trying to tell you that from the developer's point of view, from the staff point of view, it's very frustrating. I'm, I'm a hotel guy. I am your guy. I'm the guy that goes buys hotels from banks and redevelops it. And I've done a great job. And I don't want to brag, but that's what I do. And I'm, you know, I'm sorry that it took so many times. I wasn't David Mitchell. He's a great guy. He's a great developer. And he does great work. But I understood, I understood you guys.
I understand your frustration and also to what has came before us. I have another hotel that's in my ward, the Presidential Hotel, right across the street from you. And when they call and they have concerns, then I have another hotel that's not in my ward that's with Alderman Williams. When they come forward and they have concerns, we just have to weigh our options. Because when we do something for you, it's going to be expected to do it for others. So we're just taking time to vet it when you have others coming forward just like you.
Right, I understand, but.
And that's what I wanted to talk to you about, but I didn't get that opportunity to do it.
But the biggest challenge, I have everything teed up. I've got Joe Petty, he was actually going to be here tonight. I told him, don't worry about coming in. Who is a local architect. I believe in using all local. I have my banks lined up. I mean, this is all lined up. It's a, what's called a shovel-ready project, right? And that's what we have. I'm not sure what position they're in, but we're ready to go. And I'm just really scared that banks, with, with the way things are going, the credits are getting very tight. And they're getting honestly very tight. And we had to go do this or not. And I, and at the same time, I've been, I'm not a slumlord. This hotel needs to have renovation, whether it's going to be a hotel, whether it's going to be apartments, whatever it's going to be, mixed use. We need to make a decision and move forward. I understand you all got a new mayor coming in and new council that's coming in. I respect all that, but it's not like we just started this yesterday. We, we started talking about this a long time ago. And it's only fair that if, what's good for the town, that's what you guys have to decide. The water's water for you guys. You have to decide, you know, if, if, you know, if this is what you guys want. But I understand you all made your, made up your mind, but I'm in a tough position. As a developer, I am in a tough position. And I'm not here to insult anyone whatsoever. So if I, if I knew you guys thought I'm here for insulting you, I'm sorry, I'm not here for that. I'm a genuine developer who is good at what I do, and I've got great staff. And let's get to work. And I have no problem with PLA. I'll sign it today. We, we did Starbucks. We didn't even sign in PLA, and we used all Union. So there's no doubt about that.
Alderman Connolly.
Thank you. Mr. Rajabi, thank you for coming in. I'd like to remind you, this project has gone through multiple iterations. At one point, you stood up here and said, if we didn't approve what you wanted, you were going to do Section 8 subsidized housing in that hotel. So I, I, I think we need to just be kind of open and honest about the different conversations we've had around this project.
Right.
Right? We have an hotel occupancy rate of, Scott, you're going to probably, I know you're going to correct me. It's over 50% right now, right? Despite the fact that your hotel is significantly lower. So you're asking the city to invest $19 million into a hotel where we know we have a high demand. We know the demand is there for these rooms. And absolutely, your staff, this is not, your staff's quality and, and the caliber of work that they do has never been called into question. That has never been an issue or a concern from anyone that I've heard around this horseshoe.
Yeah.
Okay, well, I'm telling you, this horseshoe, this has not been a concern, okay? The concern, I'll be, since we're being fully just open and, and honest here, I have concerns about how you keep presenting different proposals. You did come in and threaten, as if Section 8 housing was a threat, which I don't actually believe it is. But I'm going to tell you, the dial has continually moved, the story has changed enough. I would like to allow our mayor-elect to have her time with her team to review this proposal. Now, you can say banks have failed. I think we've had two in this country.
In the country.
In the country.
I'm sorry, what was that again?
There've been two banks that had a very tech-based model that have failed recently. I, I'm not going to get into debating banking right now, but I want you to know, that comes across as you, again, heavy selling something and wanting pressure for us to do something. We have an obligation to our taxpayers. We, we just had a conversation tonight about how we're slowly pulling portions of this downtown TIF apart. And there are smaller projects that will not be done if this 19 million goes into your, your property. And we have very successful hotels downtown, on the edges of town, that are successful without having had TIF investment in them. So you, you see, you're not, we haven't rejected anything. And you can, you can present it like that if you want to. But no one in this council has rejected this current model. But it is a big deal, and it is, it is an issue that requires really responsible and thorough review by this council. And I don't think that that's being disrespectful to you or to your, your company. And, and I apologize. If any one of your employees has felt slighted by the conversation that's gone on around this topic, I, I offer my sincere condolence, apology. That has never been my intent. I don't think that has been the intent of anyone around this horseshoe. And that should not have been tolerated. So please accept that.
Alderman Connolly.
No, I'm not done.
Yeah, I'm sorry. Please.
When I hear that, that one of our, my, you know, the alderman for this ward has complications contacting you, these things should not be last minute. This should have been a conversation up to now. And yeah, there are still questions. I mean, thank you for showing us your phone with the signature, but, and we've gotten other, other materials. I've not shared them because we were told that these were confidential business information, and I respect that confidentiality. But please know that we have a lot of obligations. And, and one of those is, is to ensure that we're not giving an unfair advantage to one business over another, that we're ensuring the stability. But we had a conversation about a demolition for another downtown property. And again, the issue that was brought up was, well, there's no money to, to fix this. Well, that money largely for us comes from our TIF, right? So that is a big thing that the city can contribute. So what you're asking us to do is not just weighing into this hotel building. We're weighing that against any other potential projects in this downtown area, and I take that very seriously. So I know you, maybe you didn't intend to insult or disrespect, but I also think that you need to understand that this proposal has not been rejected. This proposal has not been denied. And it is being given the level of due consideration that it deserves. And it, this is a big decision, and we need to take our time. We need to be careful and considerate. And, and I am really expecting our mayor-elect to have a thorough review of this and bring some kind of very, very thoughtful deliberations to our conversation on this. So while I appreciate, I appreciate you came. I'm sorry for missing a tee ball, but I can promise you, probably went longer than you wanted to. We, we, we take this very seriously. And it is, it is important that it be done right. So I hope that you understand that. When we have our deliberations, that is, that is the first and foremost consideration.
Thank you, Alderman Connolly. Could I respond to you?
Absolutely.
Just wanted to set the record straight. When COVID happened, a lot of hotels, and there was, there are going to be a lot more actually, where banks have trick, what's called a trigger point in a loan. And if you don't meet certain occupancy, you don't have certain ADR, RevPAR, any, they, they have trigger points. They could use those to call, they could call the note back. And that's what happened to us. They used the 2020 occupancy, which is basically, it wasn't there. There was nothing there.
How did that not happen to every hotel in this town?
No, it is. So it all depends on, it depends on the bank, right? And also if the bank has too many, what's called a bucket list, they have a bucket, too many hotels that are in bad, like bad loans. So then FDIC comes in, like, hey, you got to get rid of those. And so they called the note. That's what happened to me. And then when I came in front of you, I was very honest. That's the only term sheet I had at that time. It's because of my very dear friend, who saw what happened here. He owns the bank in Houston, and they have branches in San Antonio. And I was able to, on the last minute, was able to put, I refinanced, you guys could check, I had to refinance the hotel. I was very lucky to find that because there was no bank that was willing to finance a big box hotel. But the problem is that financing is a short-term financing. It's not short-term, but it's, it's not for a full solution. Then I went back to them, said, okay, if I'm able to get the city to partner with me, because they've done this before in Houston, they've done it with other projects. If they could partner with me to do this project as a mixed-use development, which is going to be good for the town and also be good for, it makes sense. The numbers make sense. Would you be willing to come, you know, give me a commitment letter? And that's what we submitted to Ryan, and he submitted to you guys. So there is a lot of work that went behind this. And then when I got a call, say, hey, no, we're going to, we're going to see it after election. And then, oh, no, we're going to wait till, like, it costs a lot of money and a lot of, a lot of time. And I understand, you guys, I need to do your deliberations, but this didn't happen yesterday. We've been, I, you know, I, I want to do this right. My name is on this hotel.
But we want to do this right too, so you need to allow the respect of this council to our, our deliberations and our process so that we can do this right too.
And thank you for your kind words for my staff.
Absolutely, and I, I.
They're wonderful.
That, that should never have been part of any discussion.
Alderman Donla.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and, and thank you for being here this evening. And thank you, thank you, thank you for your interest in Springfield initially. Thank you for your interest in Springfield now. I think we have a great community. I've said before, and I'm not going to go into it too far here, but, you know, it's one of the, I remember vividly when my family moved back to Springfield when I was, I think, believe five years old.
Remember that, sir?
First thing we saw, coming into Springfield from the east, before we even saw the capital, was the, I still call it the Hilton, but the Wyndham. And it is important, we need it to be viable. But I remind you, and this really isn't directed towards you, because you had a buyer that was wanting to do a project, and you were going to step back from this project, Mr. Mitchell. When he first proposed this project, it was for zero hotel rooms.
That's right.
And just think what that would have done to all of you in this audience. And this council, it morphed into 80 hotel rooms. And this council voted that down not once but twice. And they came back with another proposal, Mr. Mr. Mitchell did, and I believe it was for a hun, around 100. And the experts in the industry told us that we, that we would, in order for the downtown and the convention center and the, to work with the Abraham Lincoln, in order for, we need 200 hotel rooms from that particular property. And, and, and when, when Mr. McCrady first talked to me about this project, this latest version, and the number was above 200, you know, I, I said, I said, now, now we're talking. This is something we need for this area. Well, you're asked, and, and please don't be offended by this, because I, I think we're all on the same page, and we're just saying it in different ways. You're asking for $18 million of, of really city funds. Now, it's generated from the project, no question. The risk would be transferred to the developer. If the developer's not successful, the developer doesn't get the money. I like those kind of things.
Right.
But the thing that makes this one quite unique, not only is it TIF money and taking a property that is not generating increment out of an existing TIF district and making a new TIF district where it would generate, generate increment, but it's also utilizing hotel motel taxes and sales taxes. That's a little unorthodox. We've done the sales tax portion before. I know we've legacy points, a whole different discussion for a different day. But anyway, it's, but I like, I like thinking outside the box, but when we're presented with projects that are unique, and then we have a change that happened last night.
Right.
We're really just asking for a timeout. I don't think anybody, I haven't heard any of you, and I've talked to a lot of you individually, saying they're against the project. It was, let's take a timeout, let's make sure we understand. I actually have some questions, more financial and process-related, that, that, and it's, it's nobody's fault. Ryan, Ryan's been very diligent about getting responses. But more of a, I like to see some more information on projections as far as how, how and when the money will be generated, you know, how much goes back to the developer, and, and we can get into that on a different day. But I was going to ask those questions when you present. I do appreciate you coming. I know it's a commitment. Family obligations are extremely important, probably, not probably, they are the most important. And I take those to heart and take them seriously. But please don't give up on Springfield. But please understand that we're, nobody's, nobody is, that I heard is trying to be disrespectful. It's just, you know, we, we have to take a timeout. We've had, we've had a change. We're not talking, we're not talking months. It's just something that we want, and who knows, even if you did, were able to present something tonight more specific to the project itself and then getting into the numbers, we, we may have, we may have ended up at the same spot, so don't be discouraged. That's all. Thank you.
Appreciate your support.
Alderman Hanar.
Thank you. There's a lot I could talk about, but I'm going to, I'm just going to say a couple of things. Number one, just to let you know, I would call the Chamber of Commerce tomorrow. They just came out with a, the, the state came out with a new grant for hotels. And our city chamber of commerce has posted it on their website today. It's hotels, arts, and.
DCEO.
And restaurants, I think it is. I could be wrong about that, but that's something you probably need to really take a look at. And Scott, you probably ought to have all our hotels look into that, you know, that would be important. And so the other thing, I want to take this opportunity. I think there's one person that you got to, you got to sit down and you need to talk to, and that's our mayor-elect, Misty Busher. She sits back here. She's the one that you need to talk to on this, because she's not up to speed on it. You know, she doesn't get all the stuff that we get. We got some financial information. I don't, over the weekend, and I'm sure you were busy, as everybody else is. But, you know, and, and as we, we probably need to get, start getting some things to the new alderpeople on this, because they're, they're going to have to start, you know, we, we might as well start beating them through the, the fire hose right now, because they're going to have to get up to speed quick, just like we all did. But, you know, it's unfortunate the timing. I'm not against your project. I do have some questions. I've, I've asked Ryan some questions and, and, you know, we'll get a little bit more into it. But as I got questions from, you know, I got information from him, unfortunately, we all were a little busy the last couple of weeks with, we were kind of preoccupied with this, with the election and everything, as could be expected. But I'm not against your pro, your project. I've got some concerns. And I'm not going to get into the, the debate about all the other stuff, but I think that you, you need to take time to sit down and talk to Mayor-elect Busher and, and make sure that she has everything that, that's necessary. And then when we, when you come back, we can, I think, I'm, I think we can get this thing hammered out. But, you know, I, I, and I, like Alderman Donla said, we appreciate you wanting to, wanting to invest in Springfield. We really do. But I also, I got calls from other hotels, and they were hot. They were not happy. And, you know, so that, that kind of, you know, I was ready to go, I, you know, and, and that kind of put the brakes on. And so, and I, and, and I know Ryan knows about it, so, you know, he's done a good job and, but he's respected our wishes on what, on, on how this is going. And, you know, govern, government does not move fast, especially with $19 million. It just doesn't. I don't, you know, so, but thank you. And please get with, with, I almost said Alderman-elect, Mayor-elect Busher, if you, if you could, and, and, you know, get her up to speed.
Absolutely. Thank you so much for your support. My biggest concern is not that I'm not able to perform. I know I'm going to be able to do that project. I've got projects in Texas that I'm doing. It's the banking for big box hotels. That's the biggest challenge. And that's been the same thing I've been telling you guys from the beginning. Mayor-elect Busher, your background is banking. So you're very well aware of how the banks are tightening up. They're not just giving out money left and right for big box hotels. It's just, it's, it's a whole new reality. And we just have to be aware of it. So urgency is, is the key. I mean, I'm not, it's not like I've, like, brought this to you guys, in front of you guys yesterday, and say, hey, we got to get this thing today. Yes, I was, it was urgent when I came in front of you, when I, when I had my debt called. And I only had one choice, which was government says housing. But thank God, I, that's not what I wanted to put my name behind. And I was able to create some new, I had to refinance it. So I'm, I'm at the, if the banks are willing to finance, and, and I'm willing to do it. But the problem is, I don't know if that's going to happen. Right now, I have a bank in my corner. They're actually watching me right now. They're willing to, they've written a letter, they're willing to make this project work. They're willing to partner with me. I can't tell you that they'll, a week. I can't tell you that they'll, a week, two weeks, or I think it's a month that you guys are asking to wait. I don't know how they feel. I, I, it's not like it's my bank. That's something that we have to be, just be aware of.
I think everybody understands the, uh, economy we're in, you know, credit's tightening, as was, was explained, so. Uh, but the council members are speaking up, saying they do support the, uh, project in general. There's, uh, questions, uh, the Hotel Lodging Association. You know, they want to see what's in it for everybody, you know, all the hotels. It's anytime you offer an incentive to a, uh, uh, an industry category, everybody in that category doesn't want a competitor getting a leg up. You know, that's understandable, but, uh, each project has to stand on its own merits. And there's only certain projects that can qualify for targeted TIF. And I think the variables in this is going to be the hotel, uh, tax dollars, as well as the, uh, sales tax dollars. And, uh, with regards to the finances, it's up to eighteen and a half million dollars. It's the funding for the hotel side of improvements and the convention side of the improvement. So, if you put fourteen million dollars in, the project has to develop that. And if it doesn't generate the taxes, you take on the risk.
That's right.
It's as simple as that.
That's exactly.
Or if you put eighteen and a half million dollars into the shared spaces, as well as the hotel rooms, that's where it goes up to that level. Just so everybody understands how that's structured.
Yeah.
Alderman Williams?
Yes, I want to thank you for coming. And, um, I, I, I agree, I think we've been a little, just keep portionist and portionist and portionist, and you've experienced what you've experienced. But I, I would say I'm glad to hear, they all say that, you know, they're not really against the project, but, but they need the time. So, if I were you, I would just, uh, find out if you have the time. If you don't, you just don't do hotel rooms and do what you gotta do. Uh, because that, that's a, a business decision. And I think we've held this thing up four or five times and went through, hey, ain't nobody mad at nobody, that's your business. They know they need these hotel rooms. Our director knows. I don't hear enough from him about supporting this thing and getting this thing done. So, what I would say to you, check with your bank. If it is in fact true that you may lose the banking or the support from the banking, then, then do your apartments only, or do whatever the law allows you to do with your building. And, and we as this council and the new mayor will have to figure it out. But to ask you to constantly keep coming back and portioning it back, now we're talking a month away? I, I, I agree with you. I think it's unfair. Uh, I do think the way you come off can, can seem to be like you're, um, being disrespectful, but I don't think you mean to be. I just think it's the frustration coming out. I supported this thing way back when it was eighty rooms. I said to the director, to the mayor and others, eighty rooms is better than zero. They still voted the damn thing down.
Right.
So, what I'm saying to you is, as we went through all these cycles and done this, they all had their say and, and talk. I'm telling you what I would do. I would check with my bank. If my bank can't stick with me, I'd go straight, straight ho, straight apartments. And, and, and the new mayor and this council would just have to figure out how we do conventions. Thank you for coming.
Really appreciate your support.
Any other discussion? Alderman Gregory?
I just thank you for coming, man. I'm sorry you're in this position and, and, you know, I'm, I'm really looking out here to your staff, who I do, uh, when we go to these events, work and do a wonderful job. So, you know, I, I hate that we're in this position that's taken so long. Um, I, I, I do believe, you know, that eventually we can, we can try to work it out. And, uh, I mean, it just is what it is, man. We just ran out of time. I know the mayor has tried, I've tried, I've been at the table with, with Alderman Purchase since, since the get-go. So, um, you know, it, it is what it is, we just ran out of time, so.
Really appreciate your support, sir.
Any other discussion? Well, thank you for coming, we really appreciate it.
Mayor, thank you so much for your support, and I'm a citizen, sir, thank you all.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, guys.
And then, uh, we have Gary Kessler sign up to speak. Do you need help? Do you need assistance? Chief will, uh, chief will assist. Oh, sorry to hear that.
Yeah, it's okay. Anyway, first I want to say that you're, you're lucky my brother's no longer among us. But I came down this morning and after being told that Adams Street would be closed, when all Adams closed, by, the sidewalk was closed after I was assured that it wouldn't be. It turns out the sidewalk really is closed past my store, towards the rest of the block, but the sign saying was closed, it put right at the corner, indicating it was closed in front of my store. I don't even know if this is really legal, there's no access to my store. I still have my employees, electricity, insurance, no compensation. He didn't close streets too much for Memorial, completely reading themselves. He wouldn't close Monroe by the post office. I, you left access to ascend across the street. Most cities do big projects like this at night, so as not to get too much in the way of businesses. You don't even care about all the, all the sales tax revenue you're missing. In the last, in the last fifty years, I've known, I've known one, one mayor who seemed to truly care about having a good and vibrant downtown. I've been there since nineteen fifty-eight, I won't go into it. I've seen this downtown, I've seen what's been done and how and why. But, you know, we've been in this building for a hundred and twenty-three years. We're, we're the oldest family-owned business in Springfield. We're now nationwide, we have worldwide customers. Yet, I feel, I feel like a piece of garbage, unwanted, unneeded, like being told to just close and go away. I, I don't mean to offend you too much, but as you can tell, I'm, I'm really not very happy. You've, you've, this has basically made my business impossible to run. To get to it, you have to go down Seventh against the traffic, to the alley, and go through that area and get in, then come back down to the corridor and around the block and pass the sign that says the street is closed. So, will you please do something and help me be able to survive this project for the next two weeks? That's all I've asked. I don't want money, I don't want, I just want, I want the sidewalk closed side to be moved down by the art gallery, where it truly does need to be closed. And I'd like some sort of semi-reasonable access to the sidewalk near the corner of Seventh and Adams. I, I just, I have lots of customers, they want to come in. I just, it's bad enough they can't park anywhere, but really, I just will be allowed to do business and have customers be able to get to me. So, thank you, that's, that's all I've got.
Well, I appreciate you, uh, calling today and, uh, going through that with us. I checked with Nate Bottom, and, uh, what it is, is the Illinois buildings doing a HVAC, uh, change out of their units, which has a large crane there.
Right.
And that's why the road's blocked, but the fencing was not put in correctly, in my opinion. And I'll let Nate speak to it, but I think he's contacting the contractor to make sure there's an access point on your side of the block on Seventh and Washington.
Right. The sidewalk needs to be closed, the second half of the block, but not in by half.
Right. But Nate, if you'd speak to that, give everybody update.
Yeah, I've reached out to the con-
You're welcome.
I've reached out to the contractor, um, to have them adjust the pedestrian, uh, controls that they have in place so that there's not as adverse travel, um, so that we can, um, help, help get access to recycled records. And, uh, we're gonna meet with them first thing in the morning to try to get it resolved.
Thank you, Nate.
Alderman DeSanto?
Thank you. The city has a history of doing this. Put me out of business myself in two thousand and two. Closed a whole street that was supposed to be three weeks and ended up being four months and reopened on September eleventh. Um, so, you know, Nate had nothing to do with you.
Yeah.
But we just need to be very cognizant of when we do this to small businesses.
Yeah, and, um, we were, uh, very, we were cognizant of this. Unfortunately, there is definitely an impact. Um, we did have them do a lot of the prefabrication ahead of time, so as you still did a lot of prefab. Um, and, uh, the, the other contractors did a lot of the prep work ahead of time so that the closure would be as short as possible. Unfortunately, when you're using this large of a crane, um, you know, it, it takes a day to set up. They're removing the cooling towers, uh, right away, and then they're doing the, the demo of the steel as quick as possible, uh, and then, and then they're gonna get the cooling tower the next day up, and then we'll, they're gonna disassemble the, the crane, uh, the day after that. So, we're trying to minimize the impact. Unfortunately, there is one, and apologize. We'll, uh, do what we can to adjust the traffic control.
Can you stay right there? So, I have one more issue. I have a neighbor that's been forced out of her home, as you know, because her neighbor's basement caved in. So, this happened during the storms last Friday night, right behind where I live, and on Woodland. Who's going to pay? I mean, she's lived there for forty-six years, she has animals, she's been staying in a hotel. Who's paying for that? Is it the neighbor that's paying for it? Is it the city? Because it's the city that's not allowing her back in her house.
Well, we're, from a safety standpoint, obviously, we, we want to make sure that, uh, we're keeping our residents safe. That, that's our, that's our job, um, as part of the building code official. Um, we've reached out to them, let them know, um, the safety concerns. Uh, in regards to that, I think it's more of an insurance issue and potentially a claim against the other person.
That's what I've said, I've said the same thing.
Uh, but, um, we're obviously pushing, trying to get it fixed as, as, uh, fast as possible. Um, our building inspector, I know, gave the resident, um, was out there that, that same day. Reached out to them, gave them their cell phone number, and we're trying to be as accommodating as we can. Uh, but obviously, our number one priority is to keep people safe, both, uh, in both houses.
So, when will there be an answer of when she can return to her home?
Um, well, I mean, it's at her own risk if she wants to go in there at this time.
She wants to go in there.
Obviously, we would obviously like to keep them safe, um, you know.
Will take the risk.
That, that, that is, that is on her, if she wants to take that risk. However, with us being the code official and the potential of it failing, we recommend that they not be in that, um, that structure at this time. And, um, like I say, we're pursuing getting the other structure fixed as well, as quick as possible, um, in order to get it completed.
Okay.
But there's a, not a no occupancy prohibited.
There is.
There, there is.
Yeah.
So, they enter at their own ru, risk rate, counselor?
Clearly, yes.
That's, that is what I've told her. Thank you.
You're welcome.
So, Mr. Kessler, going back to your item, uh, Nate, well, Public Works will get with, uh, the developer first thing tomorrow. Make sure you have access on the Seventh, Seventh and Washington Street side. Pardon me?
Seventh and Adams.
Yep, Seventh and Adams, right. Anybody else wish to address the council? Like to come up and state your name? We'd appreciate it.
My name is Hewitt Douglas. Last time you spelled my last name wrong is two S's on Douglas, just like Frederick Douglass. I'm here again for the same issue. The apartment building where I live, Lincoln Towers, used to be premier property. Just had a guy in here talking about nineteen million dollars. I don't know if it'd take that much, but I'd love to have some TIF money to my building too. Realistically, the garbage is piling up. Stayed there for what, six days before it got moved? That's ridiculous. They cleaned the alley up, valet parking is no longer there. Fire department, police department straightened that out. But now the health department needs to come in there. Because from what I understand, and I haven't looked, we have a chute from the seventeenth floor down. And what I understand, and I haven't looked in the chute, but there's garbage in the chute because they don't have, the garbage trucks can come up. I think Lakeisha is working on, and the mayor, I thought, were working on some solutions, uh, with the owners and the garbage company being able to at least get to the street, which is, I'm appreciative of. But that building is falling apart. You already know that parking for a hundred and sixty people, uh, has been, you know, taken away. They were told this first over there at Horace Mann, lot on Ninth and, Ninth and Washington, to valet park. I'm not talking against valet parkers, the young men that they got, but they got a lot of young college men that realistically, I'm not allowing in my car. But that's just me. They told me, get over it, which I am. But again, these young men park cars everywhere they can. From what I understand, AFL-CIO next door is now towing cars, because they just park there because they think they can. They park in the Jackson Street, I can't even get into the parking spot for the handicap, because they got thirty-five cars parked out there in the evening that they haven't moved yet because, you know, folks get off work at five o'clock. Well, by six o'clock, you got twenty-five cars lined up trying to get moved by four or five guys. I just asked the city to please continue. Missy, you know I love you. You know, I want you to do the same thing my buddy Jim did. Continue to listen to me, continue to know that I'm here, I'm not going anywhere. I'm just like the roach when it comes to a nuclear bomb. I'll be around. Good Lord, they ain't called me home yet.
No, sir.
So, I'm gonna be here to speak up. And I don't know what this guy, with this nineteen million dollar begging game going on. I'm gonna talk about him too. I got a man, oh, y'all don't put no timer for me. He went past at five minutes.
Yes, he does.
I counted twenty-five minutes. For him begging for something that he should have stayed his butt home and went to his boy's game. Because he knew he wasn't gonna get none here tonight, but he wanted to come and complain. Well, me too. That's what y'all get paid for. Not enough, but we're complaining. Am I missing anything?
You are.
Oh, the elevators.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I had to walk down today, y'all. Three hundred and fifteen pounds of man do not go down steps very easy when they sixty-eight years old legs. One guy passed me, he was skipping down the steps. I'm like, damn, I used to could do that. I could run down nineteen steps. I used to live in a near-door village, I used to run up nine flights five times a day. Not anymore. Those elevators, so, I would like a study done, I'm serious, about how many elevators in this downtown area, because elevators are important, very important, especially when you live on the sixteenth floor. Believe me, and, and I know y'all live in the nice little houses and, 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 and you, you know, got the lawn and all of that, but I got a view of the city. I got a view above the tree line that you would love to see, and I won't charge you but five dollars to come look. Thing is, ladies and gentlemen, I'm here-
Do you have to walk up the stairs to look at it?
I'm sorry. Y'all got to walk up the stairs? No, let's hope not.
Okay.
But we are here, and I'm, I'm not just representing me. We have started, and we're gonna continue with you and the mayor-elect to get a resident council in that building so that the owners of that building know that we have a voice, and we should have a say-so about where we live. I love living there. My wife can't stand it, but she ain't the one paying the bill. It's me. Y'all don't tell her I said that now. Oh, it's on TV, ain't it?
Yeah.
That's all right. But the thing is, I'm here to let y'all know, we are not happy at five-twenty South Second Street. And we're asking, whatever you can do, please do it. Because the owners there, I believe, are really trying their best, just like the young man at the Wyndham. And it costs money, and I know that. But y'all gotta put some pressure on them to make them spend a little four or five million dollars for the elevators. Elevators are very important. Garbage is, parking is, elevators are really important. So, I don't want to waste y'all's time. Anything else you want to say?
Alderman Purchase?
Thank you. Uh, so, we had a meeting, and I've been trying to follow up each time I receive emails with the Public Works Department, the Fire Department. I am sorry that Ms. Douglas was stuck in the elevator for an hour and a half.
Yeah, my wife was not happy.
Yeah, she, she called me today to ensure me that she was coming to speak, and she said- Yeah, she, she called me today to ensure me that she was coming to speak and she said she was thankful, but the only thing I can do is share the information that I'm provided and trying my best to make sure we get answers back. Josh, he said it's a process in place. I don't know where, Nate, can you tell us where we at with, I think it was some plans that was supposed to be turned in? And this meeting happened over two weeks ago. I'm not for sure where we're at, but I'm working on trying to ask for follow-up conversations so I can provide it to you all. And that's the best that I can do, but I'm glad that you all are bringing a, a association together so we can continue that dialogue.
Yes.
And, and again, I'm sorry that she had to spend an hour and a half in the elevator.
Oh, no, that's, you know, that's, that's, spending an hour, I only spent like thirty minutes in one a couple of years ago, but elevators are important.
I got photos of the garbage coming out the chute.
Yeah, yeah, garbage, yeah. They told me a cat was in there, but I don't believe a cat was in, in the chute, you know. I would have heard the cat, because cats is the reason I moved to the sixteenth floor, you know. I don't hear that noise at night, it sounded like a little baby crying. But the thing is, elevators are very important. The next meeting, which I want to know, when is the next meeting that they had before? Missy, I hope you would like the mayor will be there. Because people respect authority. And y'all have the authority to get the respect you need. I appreciate y'all and thank you. And best record shop in the world.
That's right.
I'm telling you, best record shop in the world. Anything you want, he can get it for you.
That's right.
Anything else?
No, thank you, Missy.
God bless y'all. Y'all have a nice evening.
You too. Anybody else wish to?
Mayor, can I say something?
Yeah, go ahead.
I did talk to Downtown Parking, Inc., and they have lots that are much closer than the Horace Mann Lot for this particular property, but the property owner chose not to pay the rent and rent from Downtown Parking, Inc. for closer lots for your residents, Lakeisha, or Alderwoman Purchase. So that's something that we could talk to them about, is those lots that are closer that Downtown Parking, Inc. does have.
They got, they got close apart. They did get close apart.
Thank you.